Maintaining some form of physical distancing. This meeting is for council members to review and discuss important issues, projects, and future council meeting agenda items. This meeting is a work-study session only and allows the city council to hear input from city staff. No action will be taken at this meeting, and there will be no opportunity to provide public comment. Thank you for joining our Glendale City Council Workshop.
Good afternoon. Welcome to Glendale City Council Workshop Session of September 14, 2021. Meeting is called order. Attendance roll call we're not going to make. Everybody is present. If you'd make note of that, please. Ms. Bauer, if you'd go ahead and just take us right on into item number one.
Sonoma Cotton Annexation AN-227 Application for 36 Acres Located at the Southeast Corner of Cotton Lane and Northern Avenue.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Members of the council here for the first item today for today's workshop will be Tabitha Perry. She's our interim planning administrator.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. The application for annexation before you is 36 acres in size and is located at the southeast corner of Northern Avenue and Cotton Lane. The property is in the county jurisdiction with planned industrial and intermediate commercial zoning districts. The city general plan designation is for regional mixed use, and the most light-compatible zoning district would be light industrial M1. The proposal is for the applicant to also rezone the property to PAD, Planned Area Development, for a mixed-use development consisting of commercial, industrial, and multifamily residential land uses. The property in question is approximately 13.5 miles from City Hall. This aerial map depicts the irregular shape of the property that is before you. The surrounding zonings are in the county for the property surrounding the property, the subject property. The annexation map itself depicts the annexation application AN-227, and it is worth noting that the 36-acre parcel before you right now is the smallest parcel being proposed for annexation within the New Frontier Corridor area. This conceptual site plan exhibit is intended to give you an overview of what the proposed rezoning application will ask for. Just south of Northern Avenue is 24 acres that is being proposed for two buildings for commercial development, and the two larger buildings are for industrial building comprising of a total of 345,000 square feet of development. And then just east of Cotton Lane, the applicant is proposing 144 single-level rental units over 12 acres. The conceptual site plan is just a larger visual of what the proposal for the rental units would like. The plan before you right now depicts, once again, the two smaller buildings for commercial and the two larger buildings for industrial with one access point being proposed on Northern This Loop Air Force Base North contours is just to show that the proposal is a little more than a half a mile outside of the North contours. Therefore, a general plan amendment would not be required. Because the application is including residential component, the developer will need to comply with the graduated density concept, which this requires for the location of a maximum of four dwelling units per acre. So we take the entire size of the parcel, which is 36 acres, times the four dwelling units per acre to come up with 144 units, and then the applicant developer has the ability to decipher where on the site they would propose those units. So the proposal for the 144 units is in compliance with the graduated density concept. Loop Air Force Base is aware of the annexation, and upon initial look of the annexation itself, there does not appear to be any concerns from their perspective. They're still reviewing the rezoning application to give a final determination. The fiscal impacts shows that the overall project will generate a positive net fiscal impact to the city with one-time fees estimated at $2.5 million and a possible net benefit to the city of an estimated of $190,000 per year excluding the one-time revenues. This bar chart is intended to show you the blended average. So for the revenues, overall, it's estimated at $460,000 in revenues, with the expenditures being estimated at $270,000, and then the overall net benefit to the city being estimated, once again, at $190,000. Provided that council provides direction to proceed forward with the annexation, the next step would be the blank petition, followed by a public hearing for the adoption of the annexation. And if that annexation adoption is approved by council, the property will be added to the city limits 30 days later. Council, that concludes the presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Clark?
Wait a minute. Thank you, Mayor. I am inclined to not support this proposed annexation. We developed a council policy probably five or six years ago that encouraged the development of commercial, manufacturing, industrial in this area that we call the New Frontier and not residential. Now, as far as I'm concerned, the applicant is using fuzzy math when it comes to the residential portion. It's his right to include all the acreage in his mathematical equation and then turn around and say, oh, see, we meet the four units to the acre. But really, even in their narrative, they say they're proposing approximately, and I'm quoting, 144 single-story homes, 11.6 dwelling units to the acre, including a mix of duplex style and detached homes. I think it violates the spirit of the graduated density concept. So on that basis and the basis of council policy to discourage residential in our New Frontier area, I cannot support this. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you, Mayor. What is the... What comprises the expenditures? What is that taken into consideration?
One second, Council.
Thank you.
Mayor, Councilwoman Tomachov, it takes into consideration for the improvements to the road as well as anticipating that the private... That for the residential, it will comprise of private streets for the maintenance aspect of it as well as expenses that we inquire from, like fire and police.
I'm sorry, Mayor. Could you say that again? Fire... We don't have any public safety out there.
Mayor, Councilwoman Tomachov, currently, we do not. But looking at the area, short-term and long-term, whether we enter into a contract for those services or in if the city has to budge it for those services in the future.
$270,000 seems awfully low to support especially, you know, I don't know, 300 or so residents. And then whoever also... I mean, I know, and I agree with Councilwoman Clark, we've indicated we really prefer no residential out there, but that's not to say that there aren't industrial accidents and that there's still not a need for public safety. There, you know, there's people coming back and forth to work. I mean, any development out there is going to create potential for the need for public safety with more people traveling on the roads, going to and from these jobs that we're creating. So I just thought that number, for me anyway, I'd like to... If there's any more data available to support that number, that does seem really low to me. If you're including, you know, all the costs for the maintenance of the streets and all of that, it seems like... It doesn't seem like very much. $270,000 doesn't go very far. So I was just curious what all was in... So that's really all in, an all-in number for that. Is that right?
Mayor, councilmembers, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Phelps?
Mayor, members of the council, just a couple of things just for your consideration as you go forward. One, remember that this is an annexation application to us, which we've treated a little bit different in the past than those who are required to be part of the city and have no other option in terms of where they're at. Two, we've used the ability to co-locate density on a smaller area on a number of different occasions. One was the Cabin Homes as an example of something the council approved here approximately two years ago that allowed them to kind of take the entire site and shrink down their development to that side. I think that one of the things we looked at long and hard is if you look to the west of this site is that you have a lot of residential, even though it's not in the... It's not city residences. They are the residential community in Waddell immediately to the west. And if you look at that, the only way you'd be able to do any kind of commercial, manufacturing, industrial on that site would be then to put all of the traffic out on the road that abuts the residential. And so when we looked at this, in that it is an annexation application to come into the city, the fact that we have done the ability to condense a site down to create a little bit more overall density, and because of the impact of the neighbors to the west, we felt this was a good compromise, which will then ensure that the main part of the corner on Northern Avenue remains industrial, and then we have the one smaller project here. We don't anticipate having to build... This is not a large enough development to trigger any type of additional substations or fire stations this time, so we can rely on our existing automatic aid and mutual aid agreements in the area to provide support there. So just something as consideration, we do do this. We did a look at the impact of the neighbors to the west, and we felt that this compromise, being that they were, you know, coming in as an application for annexation, was worthy of recommending to go forward on it. Thank you.
I've got a couple of questions, and I don't know who to ask, if it's you or maybe a developer, I don't know. Cotton Lane from the southern part of their property up to the intersection of Northern, will that road be required to be widened? And then also from Cotton Lane on Northern up to nearly the 303 entrance ramp, will that also need to be widened to accommodate?
Mayor, councilmember Cotton Lane will have to have 65 feet of half-street improvements, which would include the curb, gutter, sidewalk, and any other McDOT detailed requirements. And I apologize, Mayor, I didn't hear your second question.
Well, and the same question for Northern Avenue from Cotton Lane going eastbound up to the 303, where ADOT takes that over. Will that need to be widened and curbed and gutted and all those things?
Mayor, councilmembers, I don't have the answer for the Northern Avenue as of yet.
Okay. So my next question is if we're annexing this, does then... And you... I think you sort of almost answered my question. You said the county would remain responsible for Cotton Lane, not the city of Glendale?
Okay. Mayor, that is correct. Cotton Lane will be controlled by McDOT with the county.
Okay. And then Northern, is that going to fall under McDOT or under Glendale?
Mayor, councilmembers, based on my notes, Northern is controlled by ADOT by a little more than 1,000 feet of the Loop 303, and then the city of Glendale will control the remaining 990 feet along the property frontage.
Okay. That's if it's annexed. If it's not annexed, then it stays county? Is that correct? Somebody? Anybody?
Mayor, councilmember, we don't have the answer for you on that question as of yet. I can report back to you.
Anybody have an educated guess? And that's all I'll keep it as, as an educated guess.
Yeah. This is going to be an educated guess, and maybe it's not like PhD-educated, but Cotton Lane, you know, we're in the process now of developing an IGA with the county, sorting out what archerials they're going to maintain and which ones we are, and you're going to see that very soon. But right now, we're presuming that the county will maintain Cotton Lane. I am not sure about that small section of Northern Avenue. I'll have to get back to you on that. I'm not positive of that. Although Tabitha did say that from the 300 westward, there's at least a quarter of a mile that would still be ADOT. That section between where ADOT ends and Cotton Lane is... Well, I'll have to get back to you. I can't be sure which section of that archerial that we agreed that we would take on and which one the county would.
Okay. All right. Let's go back to Tabitha. So the southeast corner of this property that they're not putting property on, is that the same property owners?
Let me see if I can go back here on the slides to make sure.
Something in the back is going on.
But that corner, at the south corner of it, that's not shown as part of it?
Of the intersection, the southeast corner. So immediately west of their property and north of their property that they're planning?
Mayor, no, that is not part of... They don't own that property.
Okay. So has that been... Is there any request in line for annexation of that corner?
Mayor, members of council, that's a U-Haul facility with storage on that site, and we did reach out to them to see if they'd be interested in annexation in. They said no. And so one of the things that we were also concerned about is they had a desire to expand their storage into that property up there, and so it was another reason why we were felt if we could bring this in and annex it, we would prevent that from turning into an expanded storage facility, which would really, you know, in our mind, not, you know, generate any financial benefit to the area.
Okay. And to be clear, there's currently nothing on that property now. And you're talking about the U-Haul were on the west side of 303. They actually have a location?
Yeah. The buildings you see there on that's kind of circled out from the blue line, if you're looking at page number four on the slide, that is the facility. That is a U-Haul facility with storage.
On the north side. My picture doesn't show hardly any blue at all, and so it's kind of hard to figure out.
Are you looking at the aerial map, Mayor?
I can't get this.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. What I'm looking at, it doesn't look like there's anything there whatsoever.
Okay. So I'm sorry. You're looking at the site that is... That abuts the 303 to the... That is on the south end of Northern Avenue would be to the north, and there's a spot where they want to annex in, and then farther down south, you'll see a series of four buildings that run horizontal and two buildings that run vertical.
Okay. That's the U-Haul site?
That's the U-Haul center.
Okay. So I got that. And so separated by that, this is proposed new building in this corner up here?
Correct.
That was my question.
Yes. So if you look at the site plan, we kind of squared off this kind of... Because it's a... Again, it's a squared-off S-shaped parcel, so we had staff kind of mark that off to make it a more square development to, one, accommodate the mixed-use commercial manufacturing, and then to the south to accommodate the residential.
Okay. Okay. Yes.
Thank you, Mayor.
No.
Now it is. Okay. So when I'm looking at the... And I love that we get these now, is the current annexation's map on Slide 5. It appears that this is literally only connected to the south by either annexations that are in progress or that we've already done. So although all the way around it is county, it's... I mean, it seems almost like we're kind of sort of creating a county island out there by annexing this, because it's a little weird-shaped parcel, and the only way it's connected to anything else is AN-230, right, directly south of it? Is that right?
Mayor, Councilwoman Tomachov, that is correct. That application to the south will be forthcoming before you guys for consideration roughly and probably another month or so.
So if for some reason that annexation 230 doesn't actually go through, this literally would be a county island?
Yeah.
Mayor, Councilwoman... Yes, that would be correct.
I would be inclined to wait and see what annexation 230 is. I don't think we want to create any county islands, so that's kind of where I'm at. I think we... I feel like we should wait. Councilwoman Clark has considerations also, but if that doesn't... If what we don't... I don't know what that annexation is, what's being proposed there, but if we don't annex that, then this literally would be creating a county island, which I feel like is a mistake. Thank you.
Mayor, members of council, the 230 is very consistent with the other annexation issues the city council has been approving in large quantities over the past two years. We'll get you information on that, but it's a large commercial manufacturer annexation that will generate quite a bit of new jobs and commercial space, so we'll get that information to you. But it's very consistent with the other types of proposed projects. Remember, our options are pretty limited as we annex in property in that area because of the overlays and the contours that's required in the different zoning that's out there. There's no residential being proposed on annexation 230. It is 100% industrial manufacturing designation.
Mr. Phelps, let me ask you a question that really I think everybody should be thinking about. If we basically say no to an annexation, they can still build out there on county.
That is correct, and we would lose the control over design standards and uses and those things. So it is a little bit... Our leverage is a little bit different in this area. Some because of the requirements of getting access to infrastructure like water and sewer. We have more leverage. Others, we have less leverage. But again, this is relatively consistent with what we have been doing. But again, this is really a council call if they choose. Mayor, to answer your question, I was a little bit confused. On the northwest corner of that site that is vacant, that is owned by the LDS Church, and that is... That does remain in the county at this point. We've not heard of any plans for them to develop that or to annex it in. So that is the... So you've got kind of the U-Haul down at the right-hand corner, you have the property by the LDS Church, and then you have the proposed area for annexation kind of running horizontal or vertical or diagonal.
Okay.
Are all three.
Actually, Joyce, hold on.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the concerns that the other council members have raised. I thank you for the volume. I'm curious as to how this integrates with our voter-approved general plan. Will this require a general plan amendment to develop the way that it's been proposed here today? And I realize this is an annexation hearing, not a zoning hearing, but we only do ourselves, our residents, and the applicant harm if we don't look a little farther down the road. Thank you.
Mayor, Councilmember Turner, we evaluated right now the general plan designation is for regional mixed use, and because the applicant will be coming forth with a PAD proposal for the rezoning, that it will not require a general plan amendment.
Mayor, Ms. Perry, so I'm looking at our general plan categories. We have a category in our general plan for industrial, and that's not how this is... This site is designated in our general plan. The designation, as you just said, is regional mixed uses. I can't, at the moment, find a definition for what's included in regional mixed uses, but I don't think that industrial is what we were considering and planning for out there in that particular corridor that parallels the 303 and is outside of the 65 decibel. I don't... I was out there not too long ago, and it doesn't look like we're running out of industrial land available inside the 65 decibel, and I'm concerned about the future and the ability of this area to support itself through tax revenues. And if we keep giving away the land that we've been planning on having a commercial designation and generating tax revenue, then this area out here will become parasitic to the rest of the city, perhaps. It's hard to predict the future, but that's my concern, and I don't want that to happen. I don't think that that would qualify as good long-range planning. So then my next question would be, is this particular property encumbered by the EPCOR agreement, where in order to get water and wastewater service, they do have to come to us for annexation?
Mayor and Councilmember Turner, this property is part of that PADA agreement, and it is intended for this property to receive services for their sewer and water by EPCOR.
And as I understand that agreement, we only get the, in essence, like first right of refusal. If we decide not to annex it in, then they can proceed with their annexation with the county.
Council... Mayor and Councilmember Turner, that is correct.
Mayor, that appears to be a sticky wicket. I would... I don't... I mean, I would say I really appreciate the concerns that have been raised, including the nature of the residential there, though in that it is rental, it would generate sales tax revenue, the 2.2% on rental properties, but there's only 144 units, so that's not a ton of it. And I just... I mean, if they want to proceed with caution, but, you know, it just feels like we're in a kind of a tight bind here, but I would try to caution staff to try to project and adhere more closely to what the voters approved in the general plan, though I realize that it can be sticky on your end as well. Thank you.
Mr. Phelps?
Yeah. Let me just... A couple of things added additional information. So one, and I'll get perhaps Randy Huggins to provide a report back to the council, because actually, while you may drive out into the area, in the New Frontier area, and see what appears to be a lot of vacant space, we actually now... We could not find a site available recently for a new potential development that needed roughly around 50 acres. They've literally everything that has... There's been so much transaction and property changing hands for development. So oddly as it may look when you go there visually, we actually are now concerned that we don't have a lot of opportunities to attract new projects based on the available land within the city. With regards to 303 corridor, again, we can certainly pivot as an economic development department, but this council has been relatively clear that along the 303 corridor from our northern border down to Camelback, on the west side of the 303 to either Citrus or the Cotton Lane, everything the city has been doing has been zoning that in as manufactured commercial industrial uses. And we've done literally millions of square feet of projects, probably in excess of 10 million square feet on the west side of the 303 in that area. So I think this application at least is consistent in that area except for the notion of the fact they want to put 110, 20-plus units of residential in. That was, you know, we've been pretty firm with other annexation issues where we have more control of saying, you know, we're going to do... You know, we're not going to approve any other uses. So again, it's a council call, but I will say, we are getting concerned about the number of available space, because we've been very successful at generating a lot of new projects here in Glendale along the 303 corridor.
Thank you. Mr. Melner?
Thank you, Mayor. My question more is around the idea of residential in this area. As everyone knows, we've annexed and we're building millions of square feet of industrial space. All these industrial spaces require people to work at them, and I think this fits. It's providing a very close residential community for a very large industrial area. It's next to other residential areas, but I think it provides an opportunity for rental opportunities for the entire industrial community in the area to rent space when they need somebody close by where they can come to work very quickly. So I see it as a win in that sense, as a plus for our industrial area to have some... A little bit of mixed-use residential in there as well. And so based on that, and based on the other discussions that have been... And so based on that, based on the other discussions that have been mentioned here today, I would be in favor of moving this forward.
Thank you, Mr. Melner. I haven't formed an opinion either way, but the one thing that all of us have is bruises from getting beat up from folks in Waddell complaining about industrial. This does create a buffer, and I think that's something all of us should consider. I don't think they're going to complain about residential nearly as much as they will about industrial. So again, I haven't formed an opinion, and fortunately, we don't have to right now. Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I would remind everybody that the current county zoning is planned industrial and intermediate commercial. Now, in other instances where we have had to take residential, they already had the zoning for residential. In this case, the applicant is proposing to rezone to include residential. Either we stand by what our policy is, which is to discourage residential, or we do not. And as Mr. Phelps said just a few minutes ago, between Northern and Camelback on the west side of the Loop 303, we have concentrated on attracting manufacturing, industrial, commercial, to the point now where it's becoming difficult to find large enough parcels to accommodate some projects that want to come in. That's the first thing. Second thing I would mention is, I can't tell what kind of residential is to the west, but it really doesn't matter what kind of residential to the west. I hope you all remember Love's Travel Stop because apartments are viewed by many people as akin to a Love's Travel Stop. And if you think we're going to get admiration for having accepted an apartment complex as a quote "buffer," then we're living on different planets because I don't think that will be the case. I just don't want to set an example and open the door so that other developers can come in and offer this kind of mixed-use project. And that's what we're doing if we accept this as it is. Again, I appreciate all the comments and the thought behind this. And if you could guarantee me, Councilmember Malnar, that all 144 units would be rented by people who would work in the nearby industrial, you might convince me. But we both know that that is not going to be the case. So I don't think that's a good argument for, for encouraging residential in an area we deliberately said would be the New Frontier for industrial, manufacturing, and commercial. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Phelps, and then Councilmember Tomachoff.
Yeah, Mayor, members of council, we'll provide you some additional information. One of the things that, again, remember that the county zoning and uses that they allow is a little bit different from us. So we do have leverage in that they, for them to get services, they have to come in. But then our, their leverage with us is we have to bring it in exactly the same way their current entitlements are. And what we were trying to prevent, when you look at the existing, which is the intermediate commercial, there were a lot of uses there that we didn't feel fit in well with what from a job vision there. So what we'll do, it's, I'll grab our team. We'll, we'll kind of detail that out in a memo to you as to what they can do there then, because we'd have to bring it in with exactly the same designation through a PAD.
We always do.
Excuse me?
Nothing.
No. So, so we'll, we'll show you what that looks like, and then the council said, if you think that those kinds of uses seem to be acceptable, then we can, certainly, we have a different approach to how we could do their annexation agreement. But early on, Councilwoman Clark, we were just trying to stop that, it's that general commercial, that designation is a wide-open designation for what they can do there, where we felt like if we could restrict it to commercial manufacturing on the hard corner and then the residential, that was the trade-off between the two. But we'll get a memo out to you. You'll have plenty of time as this kind of moves forward, you know, through the process to say no and to back off of it if it is not supported by the council.
Thank you, Mayor. I just looked up the zoning on the county assessor's website, and I see the property owners, 303 and Lower Buckeye LLC out of Scottsdale, and it shows zoning C2. I know that's county zoning, but I also know that we have, we have C2 zoning available and that our annexation policy requires that we annex the property in, in as close a zoning category as possible of how it's zoned in the county. Now, I don't know, but I'm going to find out if county allows residential in C2 zoning, but we do have C2 zoning.
It's not C2.
That's what it says. I'm looking at it right here on the county assessor's website.
Mayor, Councilmember Tomachoff, sometimes the way the Maricopa County Assessor's database works, they update their information maybe quarterly. So sometimes when you look at the assessor's information, that what they show for the zoning may not necessarily be correct. I'm not saying that it is or it isn't, but when staff did their analysis, and I double-checked this morning, it showed it as being the planned industrial, which would, to some degree, would be similar to our M1 zoning district. And then that intermediate commercial would be similar to our C2 in some of the uses that I was, that is within our C3 zoning district. The reason why staff is saying the light zoning would be M1 is because we don't, City of Glendale, we don't apply to zoning districts. So we were looking at the parcel in its entirety of 36 acres and then saying that the most light-compatible zoning is the M1 for the light industrial.
So if there's a way that the two of you can compare where you're getting your information from to see which one is correct, that would, that would solve some of that confusion. You had a question?
Yeah, I was just going to say then, where does staff go to, to determine what the current zoning is? What is, what is the resource that staff uses for that?
Mayor, Councilmember Tomachoff, we use the assessors, and then we also look at the database for the county on their website for their zoning districts. So between the applicant's analysis and preparation of their application, they're showing it as the same zoning classification that is staff is stating to you in the presentation. But I'd be more than happy to speak with you offline to make sure that we're given the correct information on that.
That would be great. The assessor is county, though, so I mean, it's not like it's the state assessor, it's Maricopa County Assessor. So I would think that they would be sharing information that if there was a zoning case, obviously, the assessor should be able to update the property records because it's all county. So I appreciate the follow-up, but I, I think probably everybody would like to have that information, not just me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to double back on a couple of things, the question was asked as to what's the nature of the residential to the west? And directly west is large lot acre, two-acre horse-type properties, the Clearwater Estates kind of area. To the northwest is more typical, single-family residential neighborhood that we'd be used to, at least according to what is available on Google Earth, which doesn't get updated as often as one might think even the county would perhaps, but that's what's there according to Google Earth. The, the other thing, it was mentioned that we have authorized or allowed industrial all up and down the west side of the 303 from Camelback to our northern boundary. I'm not exactly sure we have, and if to the extent we have, it's because that 65-decibel corridor crosses over the 303 at Glendale Avenue. So south of Glendale Avenue, more or less, because it comes through at an angle, that is inside the 65-decibel where the industrial is, probably the highest and best use we have there. That's why the general plan designates that area as Loop compatible, and the area that we're talking about is the, the mixed use and that we've always, at least I and I think others have felt, we need to make sure we have uses in there that are going to generate tax revenue. And I would be interested in seeing what is spoken for, I guess, out in that area. I can see largely what's been annexed in. Don't know if all of that has a end user at this point, and I don't know whether the, this particular property has a end user committed or whether this is, and I'm seeing staff shake their head no, there is no end user committed that, you know, can't find anywhere else to locate because I know there's spec, or I'm under the impression that there's spec industrial out there. But nonetheless, you know, the, there seem to be some existing county zoning on this. We need to try to make the best of it, and I think the only way to make the best of it is probably to bring it into the city and let our, let us and our staff manage it as best as possible under our development standards rather than under the county development standards. We can have, we can discuss the zoning issues later, but that's where I think I am, regretfully.
Go ahead. You've been quiet.
Yes, sir, I have. Thank you, Mayor. I've heard quite a bit of dialogue here, and it sounds like every box has been checked. Staff has checked zoning. Staff has checked the annexation policy, and you followed every step. If we leave this to the county, we're going to do exactly what Councilmember Turner just mentioned. We're not going to be able to influence the design. We're not going to be able to influence the quality of a project. We will do that if it comes into Glendale. And I've seen our projects, and we can influence very, very well and do a very good job. And lastly, staff has answered every question to the council members, for the exception of one that you're going to verify, but I'm going to bet that, that you've checked that box, too. To this point now, I can be supportive of it, and I do agree with Councilmember Malnar that this will be a, a property where folks will live in for jobs in and around the Far West Valley as it continues to grow. So I can be supportive, Mayor, thus far, and we look forward to hearing from staff back on the, on the C2. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Any other discussion? Go ahead. Go ahead.
Mayor, I was going to wrap up by saying, so we owe you some additional information. We'll work on this. So we'll, one, we'll get a report out in terms of the like-for-like existing zoning and what that includes. We'll try to give you a range of what, if we bring it in with the current zoning from the county, what that would look like. We'll verify, obviously, that that's, that that information is correct. And then two, I'll provide a report regarding just kind of the overall overview of what's happening in the New Frontier area. A lot has changed. I mean, it literally is a, when I say a dynamic-changing environment, it literally is. I'm with Randy Huggins and his team almost every week on new projects. So we'll give you a good overview to kind of show you what is happening there. It's kind of good news, but we'll lay that out to show you kind of where we think available, available opportunities are. Again, it's not to say there's not land available, but not all of it's, are ready for development. And so when we say we have a site, someone looking for a site, they're usually on a fairly tight timeline, and so we have started to run into some problems there, but that's a good problem to have. So we'll get the information to you, and then we can certainly answer any questions offline between now and if the council wants to bring this back as a, as a blank annexation petition. We'll have that information long before that happens.
All right. And I, and I wanted to bring up one, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, that's okay.
I just wanted to bring up one, one thought. You know, it said that potentially everybody in these apartments could be working in the area. I don't, and this isn't good or bad, it's just being realistic. Almost everybody that I know, it seems like if they live in the East Valley, they work in Glendale. If they live in Glendale, it seems like they work in the East Valley. I don't know why people do that. It just seems like that's the way it happens. So to think that everybody is going to work at these, these new developments in those apartments, I think is wrong, but who cares? If they're living there, they're, they're shopping in our, in our malls and our stores and our restaurants, you know, that's the way I see it. Not everybody's going to live in the same place. If it's an apartment, it may be a temporary location now where maybe they want to move permanently into Glendale. So I don't think we should look at it that that's the only reason people would move there is because of jog proximity. I don't think that's realistic, but it'd be nice if they did because we'd have less traffic on the roads. Any other discussion? Okay, what do you need from us right now?
Mayor, I need a consensus to move forward with the annexation process.
Okay, I believe that I heard a consensus. Do we have consensus to move forward?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, we do.
Thank you, Mayor, Council.
Okay. Okay, item number two.
Special event downtown transition fiscal year 2022.
Mayor, members of the council here to provide the next staff presentation will be led by our parks director, Jim Burke, and by Heidi Boriga.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Thank you, Mr. Phelps. So thank you for the opportunity to brief you today on our special events and the, the trial we did last year with Live at Murphy Park in May, or this past year, excuse me, and then a look ahead on what's to come this season in the new fiscal year. This is an up, this is following up to the briefing we did, the city manager and the economic development department in April, and council consensus giving us direction for what we call the pivot strategy, which is changing the way we'd been doing downtown events. Today, I'm going to have Heidi Boriga do the presentation for you, and at the end, we'll be glad to take questions.
Let's see if I can get this on this time. Hi, Mayor and Council. It is nice to be here again and see you, and I'm excited to present this to you. What we have here on the first slide is the goal of Live at Murphy Park that we did in May of 2021. The goal was to use live entertainment to attract a consistent and diverse customer base to the downtown area. We wanted to establish downtown as a destination and create foot traffic and repeat visits to downtown. Throughout the May series, we brought approximately 2,500 guests to the 16-night series here in the downtown area. 75, thank you. I blame it on the transitions. You'll see here the breakdown, the average per night, Thursday evening, Friday average, Saturday average, and Sunday average. And what we saw here are some pictures of examples. We saw diverse crowds. We saw couples on dates. We saw friends and families of all ages, not only dancing in the amphitheater, but dancing up in the park area as well. REV team here in-house installed a professional stage and top-of-the-line audio equipment. The stage really became a billboard for this event, and we did it. We created a brand with the live name. We heard people saying that they had a great time at the Live at Murphy Park concert instead of, "We had fun out there in the park the other night." We heard many compliments throughout the series, and one of the highlights that I heard was a gentleman, while Mogion was playing, commented that when he closed his eyes, he really felt like he, like he was at a Pink Floyd concert. What you see here are some examples of some media events that we did. Prior to the May series, we held a media event at the Glendale Civic Center at the Fountain Terrace, where we invited all types of media platforms to learn about what downtown has to offer, about the live series, and introduce the painted guitars that we involved the downtown merchants in. In keeping up with the social media craze, we also had an influencer event at one of the downtown businesses. What is an influencer? And if you ask, an influencer is someone who has built a reputation of their knowledge and experience on a specific topic and generate large online followings. Right here, we have a couple of examples of some marketing that we did. We did some traditional marketing, like the billboards or billboards on the highways throughout the Phoenix area, but we also did a lot of guerrilla marketing. And what you see on the right was actually a video of one of the bands they sent, they produced, wearing a Live at Murphy Park hat, posted on their social media platforms, as well as we posted it on ours. The guitar art, a big hit of the Live at Murphy Park May series. Working with the chamber and the downtown merchants, we did view wooden guitars, as well as art supplies, to the downtown merchants who were asked to create a piece on what music means to them. We received 40 guitars back and hung them in the park through the month of May. It really became an opportunity for people to venture up out of the amphitheater, into the park, and see that there are other things taking place in the downtown area. And you can see as from this first photo that a lot of people were taking selfies in front of it as well. You'll also see that we had some signage near the guitars with a QR code. Once you took a picture of that QR code, it led you to a city landing page where all of the information about not only Live at Murphy Park lived, but information all of the information about not only Live at Murphy Park lived, but information about each one of the guitars and the business associated with the guitar. It also took you to a link about the business. The economic impact that Live at Murphy Park, May of 2021, sales tax collections were up almost $7,000 over the pre-COVID collections of May 2019. This represents approximately $215,000 in increased taxable sales for the downtown merchants. And what you see here in this transition budget was originally presented to the Glendale City Council at the Downtown Strategy Retreat on April 2nd, so hopefully it looks familiar to you. And it breaks down into downtown events, downtown event program, grant program, excuse me, the chocolate experience, permanent lighting, citywide event administration, and citywide special events. We get to the fun stuff. Here you'll see the fiscal year 22 downtown event lineup. October 2021, Live at Murphy Park will be coming back, Thursday through Saturday, 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. And on the next slide, I'll be talking about that a little bit more. In November, we're moving away from the traditional Glendale Glitters. On November 19th, we will be lighting Murphy Park and want to be able to invite the mayor and council to help start the holiday season. The lights will go on the Friday before Thanksgiving, allowing families that are in town for the holiday to get out and enjoy the downtown area prior to the holiday. During the month of December, Friday and Saturdays, we'll have community groups on the amphitheater, again showcasing their holiday spirit and bringing some activity to the downtown. In February of 2022, we have the chocolate experience, like we had mentioned, at the Glendale Civic Center. That, again, is outsourced to an outside company. And then we have Live at Murphy Park proposed to come back in February and March of 2022. The Live at Murphy Park, if you haven't seen the poster, I think all of you have it in your newsletters, October, Thursday through Saturday, 14 nights of live entertainment. We've really taken a step forward in our vision of the word "live" this October. It's not just about music, like we had discussed a while back when we first came up with this concept. We actually have a local comedian who's going to come out and open up one of the evenings on October 15th. So we're really excited to share that live aspect of it. We have booked bands for this live series that sell out paid performances at venues like the Marquee Theater. We have bands whose music have been featured on MTV, Univision, and Fox Sports. We have someone who's performed and received a three-chair turn on The Voice. And we have a group that is comprised of the top Latin jazz players here in the Southwest. So we're really excited to bring this different demographics here to the downtown area. We're working with the Chamber and the downtown merchants to sell prepared food and beverages in the park during these series. We'll also have one beverage truck on site during the series as well. One of the, the comments we got in the May series was people really wanted water on site. We've also been working with the Arts Commission on a great selfie opportunity. It is a 10-foot-tall, 6-foot-wide steel piece, and it will be lit for the nighttime and a great photo opportunity for everyone to share. It's going to be a great 14 nights. Like I had mentioned earlier in the calendar, the Murphy Park Holiday Lights, two features that we'll have in the park, is this giant 16-foot lit snowman. We know from experience with these big pieces, this is a real draw for people to come and take their family photos and let the kids run around. And we're also going to move the LED tree that you usually see in downtown Plaza into Murphy Park, really creating a lighting extravaganza in the park area. Again, this will be lit November 15th, and it'll stay on until the beginning of January. Any questions?
Good.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Borrega, you, can you back up to the concession part of your conversation? How, who's going to be providing? Because I know when we did the May events, that Glendale ambassadors had, had wanted to be able to sell, and I understand there's obstacles to selling alcohol, but they certainly could sell water and soda and that sort of thing, and they put that money right back into the community. So who's going to be selling? You said a beverage truck, but are there going to, is there going to be any opportunity for Glendale ambassadors to set something up and try to generate some revenue there for this, for the 14 dates in October?
Mayor and council members, at this point, there is not. We will have the downtown merchants selling their merchandise, one, one or two of the evenings, and then the beverage truck. The reason we went with the beverage truck, it's an easy load-in and load-out. They're self-contained, and they can just drive off property each, each night.
Well, why wouldn't the, Mayor, if I could continue, why wouldn't the ambassadors be able to drive in and drive out? I mean, they could use pickup trucks, and I mean, they literally could, you know, I mean, they probably, I would imagine, want to do just Friday and Saturday night, but I just feel like we're, I mean, no, they're not, we're not going to have the Glendale Glitters, so the ambassadors are not going to have that opportunity. They didn't have, you know, they've been affected by COVID, but they really, literally, the things that they do directly benefit members of our community. So I think if at all possible, we should be for private enterprise, but I think we should at least give them an opportunity to say, can, here are parameters that you have to work with, whatever our parameters are, that you have to make sure everything's taken out of the park, and then you have to set up by whatever time, and can you do that before we just dismiss the possibility of them being able to participate?
Mayor and council member, we'll look into it, absolutely.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Could I ask one more question?
Yeah, let me, let me ask a question based on that, though. I, I know, and I could be wrong, but in Arizona, revised statute, there's a, a piece of that that says if you're doing something off-site in a place that's typically not a place where you'd serve alcohol, you can, but then there has to be like 25% of the revenues have to be given to a charity. Does that affect Glendale Glitters, or, we're not calling it Glendale Glitters, what you're talking about?
Mayor and council member, it does not. That only affects when there's alcohol sales.
Okay, so it's a private company that's going to be doing this, that we're contracted to? Have they been awarded a contract?
Mayor and council member, they have not.
Okay, so maybe we should make that part of the contract, that they would, that they would give a percentage to the ambassadors, which would allow them to do what you want and still accomplish what you're trying to do? Just a thought.
That's a, that's a thought. I know that the ambassadors voluntarily, I believe, during, during the May event, came down and acted as ushers, even though there's really no opportunity for them. I mean, they're part of our community, and if there's a way for them to participate, I mean, they have this beverage thing down. They don't, I mean, it's probably not going to be hot chocolate weather. Usually October's a little early in our, in this area for hot chocolate, but I mean, the 25% is, I think, a possibility if the ambassadors aren't able to work within whatever parameters we set up for them. But I just feel like we should at least offer the opportunity to them. They've been, you know, very active. And the fact that they came down literally and volunteered and acted as ushers, and I saw them working, I was down here, I think, that three or four times, you know, during the, the May event, and the ambassadors were down here working for free and with no opportunity to generate revenue, and I feel like we, we have a responsibility to offer the opportunity to them. One other thing I wanted to ask was, you were talking about the comments and stuff from people. Were you doing intercept surveys, or how were you collecting that data?
Mayor and council members, we weren't. It was just standing out in the crowd and hearing people's conversations.
I would like to see somebody, we have a downtown manager or somebody conducting some intercept surveys and having a set of series of questions that, that people are specific, like, we should be gathering data, not just, I mean, talking to people's great, but we've literally have a dedicated manager to downtown and other people, special events staff, that I, I don't know why we wouldn't be trying to do intercept surveys and have standardized questions that we're asking people so we can, you know, figure out what we're doing great, what we, what we need to improve on next time, that kind of thing. So if, I would, I don't know whether everybody agrees with that, but I think it's something that we probably should do this time, so we standardize the data that we're collecting and know what people love, what they don't love, that sort of thing.
Something for your ambassadors to do. Good.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'm serious.
I, I not only support the concept of the ambassadors, but I think there's a hitch in this whole thing, and that is, we are not providing opportunities for local businesses to participate by selling food, for example. It's my understanding that currently what you're offering is a table, a 6-foot table that can be shared between two business, downtown businesses. That's ridiculous, okay? And I'm glad to hear that you haven't awarded the, the beverage truck concession yet, because I know that there are downtown businesses who are capable of doing that and have not been afforded the opportunity to participate. And I believe that Live at Murphy Park is something that will continue to grow, but I believe that you need to focus your intention, your attention, on how you incorporate local businesses to be able to participate in the event. And I would very much like to meet with both you and Mr. Burke to talk about that further sometime in the next week. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with the comments of the other council members regarding the ambassadors. They're not just a part of our community, they're a very valuable part. They've been working generously on behalf of our community for well over 20 years, all volunteer organization. And I think that we should, as a community, respect that and give them an opportunity to participate in, in a way that works well for them, not just for us, but let's find out. Let's not give them a list of things that we know they can't do. Let's sit down with them and see, how can you, how can we work together? How can we help you to keep earning money and putting it back into our community? Obviously, too, I support the downtown merchants and whatever opportunities there are for them to, in essence, extend their business into that park environment for the event, I think is good for us and good for them. My primary concern here, though, is on page three, has to do with the estimated attendance. I attended over half of the nights for the first go-around on this, did my own personal head count. I'm curious, what kind of methodology did the special events staff use to come up with their estimates on a nightly basis, and then for the overall attendance?
Mayor and council members, we actually hired two ambassadors that stood at the top of the park, as well as a stage manager, and two times throughout the night, they did a head count, and we logged those.
I will, I would like to see us going forward, maybe to do something a little more formal, like, you know, take photographs while they do the head count so that we can go back and take a look. I am, I'm trusting, I guess, but I'm surprised that the turnout's that high, and I don't want to set us up for failure, that if we really, if we either turn this over to someone else and we start measuring their performance, and it appears that they've fallen short because our estimates early on were too aggressive, that will not be good for the situation here. So let's formalize the, the data on that. And I realize not everybody's in the amphitheater, but half of them weren't in the park either. So let's see if we can formalize the, the counting of that so that we can all have confidence in it, because if we're going to be a data-driven organization, we need good data. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I, I too support having a space for the Glendale ambassadors. Not only do they make money, but they give it away. Back in 2020, I received some information from the organization, to date that date, they had already given away $334,000, gave away $334,000. So I would be definitely inclined in continuing a relationship with them, as they're giving quite a bit of money to organizations within Glendale and organizations that help Glendale. But two, I don't think having a table for a local business is shameful or bad at all. I think it's great if you ask a business owner, they, a simple extension of premises goes a long way. If you can extend that into the park with a table, absolutely. But I would, I would ask that staff open the door to, to local businesses, but this organization, to date 2020, actually September 20, a year ago, $334,000 they gave away. So I think it's worth creating a rekindling relationship. Thank you, Mayor.
I, I'd like to clarify something that, that I think, but I'm not positive. Was, hopefully, your intention to try to get something that seems to be just crazy popular the last couple of years is food trucks? Was that sort of what you were aiming for, is to try to get food trucks in the area? Was that, that was not a, a thought or a plan?
Local and county, oh, local, excuse me. Mayor and council members, no, the idea is not to get food trucks to the area. That really competes with the downtown businesses. The idea was really just to get a beverage service down here.
Okay, and so, okay, so you clarified that for me. So the beverage, would the locals have an opportunity to, to serve sodas, water, things like that, where alcohol would be totally separate?
Mayor and council members, yes.
Okay, and so it goes back to what I'd asked earlier about, because I'm pretty sure I heard somewhere, to get an off-site liquor license or be able to serve for a special event, that, and we've, I, I just don't know how it affects the cities, but I know that there was something to do where to get that special opportunity, you had to give 25% of the proceeds to a nonprofit, had to be a legitimate nonprofit. So I think where all of us, it sounds like we're kind of going is, we want our local businesses to have the opportunity to conduct business, and I think you guys did a great job of that in the past events. We're not barricading people in front of them where they can't see the business. Now they're actually using the business, which is what we want. But on the liquor sales, if the ambassadors had the opportunity to work with whoever's going to be providing the liquor as the labor, there might be a good compromise where we could accomplish everything. But it, it's just something that I'd like to see you pursue.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Yeah, thank you. This has been helpful dialogue, and we'll certainly reach out. I just want to maybe get some perspective either today or perhaps in the, in the coming weeks, because we've, I want to remind the council that when we talked about the Live at Murphy Park and kind of what the goals was, that one of the goals was to try to drive traffic into our restaurants that have a full-time presence there. So we haven't aggressively gone after, when we use the term, other Glendale businesses. I don't know whether, whether the council's referring to those who have a premise downtown and maybe give them an extension outside versus opening up opportunities for vendors to come into the park. So we'd probably want to have some discussion there, because if we want to allow vendors from outside the area to come in on these nights, it is somewhat a departure from our initial strategy of saying, the goal is to have music and entertainment and encourage our families and our individuals then to go and to have a beverage or have dinner and have food in the restaurants, which, when we look at the sales tax results from the April series, proved to be quite successful. So just something to, just, just as a reminder, as we're framing how we do this, and I kind of look at the October and the April, what we do again next year is a learning curve. We're going to continue to get data, continue to track what we're doing, and we can certainly continue to improve upon our format. But I, I do think that the notion of trying to encourage other outside vendors to come in is slipping a little bit back into our prior strategy built around the, the Glendale Glitters and, and those kinds of events where it becomes a more of a larger festival. So we'll, I, I don't know whether, whether that's what we were suggesting, that we bring outside vendors in, or we have, make sure we have a process to allow our existing businesses in downtown to extend out from their premise. I believe there we have that option and did encourage that to happen. If not, we can certainly make that happen.
Yeah, well, and to clarify, I, I wasn't, I was looking for clarification. I was trying to figure out exactly what the intent was. It was bringing food trucks in. It seemed like that was getting away from the direction that we all wanted to go. I think what you just said is exactly where I believe that, that we all felt we wanted to be. I think what this council is, is hoping for is that we can include our ambassadors in an opportunity for fundraising that in turn helps our community. And, and that might potentially be on whoever they decide to use for liquor sales. If they could use the ambassadors as the labor portion of that, they might be able to raise their money that way. Is that, everybody sort of agree with that principle or thought?
Well, where could you sell liquor? I thought we couldn't sell liquor. I did notice quite a few people brought their own, that I, I'm not a police officer, so. But there were people, you know, we allowed coolers and stuff, and people were, you know, clandestine in how they were doing it, but I did notice that people had brought their own. But I thought, I thought it was literally, there's no opportunity to sell, there's not liquor literally not out in the park. liquor literally not out in the park. Is that right?
Mayor and council member, you are correct.
Okay. So I have a question then, though, from Mr. Phelps. Are you considering the ambassadors an outside vendor or?
I don't know how, I mean, I wasn't trying to define them any, I was just trying to get clarification when, so I clearly heard the ambassadors, which I think is a separate notion, but I also heard us say that we should allow other Glendale, and the word was Glendale businesses to be able to participate. And I just needed definition on, are we talking about just anybody within the city that has a business license, or are we still trying to drive traffic back into our local merchants? It sounds to me what the, if I can paraphrase what I've heard, the council would like us to explore options with the ambassadors to provide some type of beverage service that could then be donated, where the proceeds could be donated back. We will certainly have a discussion with them. But I'm also picking up on the sense that our goal is not to open up street vendors and other things in the park that would take away from food and beverage sales and other activities in our existing businesses. And if I misheard that, then this would be a great time to add clarity.
Mayor? I'm sorry, if I could continue, Mayor. I agree with that. I hope that there's conversations happening with some of the businesses, too, about possibly adjusting their hours during this time to take advantage of the investment of tax dollars and that the traffic, because that was, I know that there were some restaurants that did actually establish special hours during Live at Murphy Park. And I feel like they benefited greatly because there was not a lot of other opportunity. You know, if you close at nine and the concert's over at nine, obviously you're going to miss that, that traffic if everybody leaving. So hopefully those conversations, I think it's important to have those conversations of, you know, and let us know, we can even help advertise. And I know, and I hope we continue with that, is we had the guy from Black Sheep, Daniel, that is his name, he was a fantastic MC and tried to recruit some of the other business owners, or if he wants to do it. But having a local business owner, like directing people to, you know, go here and, you know, and, I know there were suggestions on other people, but I think the downtown merchants, the ones that are willing to step in front of a microphone, I think that was incredibly successful. I had people tell me they loved it. And he's a really engaging guy. So hopefully we're going to continue on with that, too, and open that opportunity up to other business owners if they want to, LeAnn and other people who have businesses, you know, to come and say, hey, I'm going to be open till 11:00. Come over and have a drink. So, thank you.
Okay, so I need to make one quick statement, and then I promise you're next. This is for our attorney. We spoke a few months ago, and we haven't pursued it, but that's this liquor license, or the opportunity for people to consume alcohol or sell alcohol in Murphy Park. I know that they're something over 100 years old, somewhere in a deed. I'd like you to figure out what we have to do to make that problem go away, because I just, it doesn't make any sense to me in today's environment. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, since you brought up Murphy Park, remember, the top of that amphitheater was not part of Murphy Park. There was a road that ran right in front of where City Hall is today. If you look at 58th Drive, that would be a road that cut through what you now call Murphy Park. So I guess that area would become available. I think what we did with Live at Murphy Park was fantastic. I heard nothing but good news. The mayor and I were down there and people who didn't know what was going on there were surprised, the restaurants were packed. I'm pleased with the sales tax dollars collected downtown. And that is a great sign that the merchants were profiting and doing well. And the more they do, the better for everybody. And it looks to me like it's going to be bigger and better this go-around. So I think we're just moving in the right direction. And it's exciting. And people that went to it, they're waiting for it to come back again and bring their friends. So I think it's just going to get bigger and better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So to Mr. Phelps, city manager's comment, yeah, I think you're spot on, and I'm not sure that that's what we meant, and I didn't hear that, but kind of perceived that. For me, just to be clear, I do support the ambassadors here, but not as to compete with those restaurants and bars in downtown who sell alcohol. Maybe there's some way they can be uncertain weekends that won't compete with the businesses. And then when I said businesses, I meant downtown. I think that, I feel that for many years, these events, the ones that we're going away from and the ones we're going to, were intended to help sustain downtown Glendale now. I don't know how you would exclude others, but I want to be clear, I was asking that we help the downtown businesses by extension of premises and other, other ways or means that you brought up. But I just wanted to be clear, I mean, there's something we can do with the ambassadors who give tons of money away, and then also help encourage others, maybe in days that they're not there, to go dine somewhere where there's alcohol served. So just to be clear, I know that a byproduct of having the ambassadors there could mean that others won't go to a restaurant to have a beverage rather have it at the park. I think both are good, so I wanted to be clear. Thank you for bringing that up. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Milner?
Thank you, Mayor. I would agree with many of the sentiments that have been discussed here today. One thing that I would like to clarify is the idea of not having vendors in downtown, and I agree with that. However, is there anything wrong with allowing downtown merchants to have some sort of booth, whether it's in front of their establishment, or maybe they establish something right in the park or near the park, an unlimited number, to kind of advertise their wares, advertise their restaurant, maybe have some food that they can actually sell and have special permits to do that? I think that would add to the entire experience. Plus, it provides the restaurant owners an opportunity to sell as well as promote their business. Hey, come on over after the event and have dinner at our, at our restaurant. And I think, from what I saw when I was there, people don't really understand downtown Glendale and know where the things are. And they just think it's, you know, it's a park here, and they don't realize the merchants are there on the sides waiting for them to come in. And I think that would help promote that. And I think we should ask the Downtown Business Association to do that type of thing, to actually organize their merchants and do some, have some little booths either in front of their own stores or in the park. And I think that would be a plus for everybody. And I agree with the, having the Glendale ambassadors opportunity to sell, you know, water, something that is needed during the concert. People don't run to the restaurant to get a drink. This is more, it's just water and short-term drinks that they'd want to have. Thank you.
All right. And so I just want to make certain, Mr. Bailey, do you need a special council item of special interest on that, or is that sufficient for you?
Mayor and council, no. And we'll schedule an executive session in two weeks, so we can kind of walk you through the challenges.
All right. We like challenges. Any other questions?
Mayor, thank you. Yeah, I think that the city manager, as you characterized your thinking on it, I think you've captured what I was thinking, and I think what the council has been as well. I do see that, again, the ambassadors as an integral part of the community, including downtown. I'd like to see them considered perhaps on par. And to Vice Mayor's point about the consumption of alcohol, I concur with him that the restriction on the consumption of alcohol is for the park, not for the street, not for the business district where City Hall now sits. And I think that gives us adequate opportunity to provide, you know, provide some alcohol catering, or however we might want to look at it, on those properties without having the vendor or the consumer invade the park proper. And I think we could continue for another 100 years, keeping the park itself alcohol-free as it was intended by the original donor, who was a teetotaler himself. Thank you.
All right. Everybody good? You need anything else, or you good? Okay, item three. I'll be right back.
Council item of special interest regarding amending city code to authorize designation of rental property as a slum property.
Mayor, members of the council, here to provide staff report, be led by both Deputy City Manager Rick St. John and our code official, Mr. Tim Bowling.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. This is information in response to Councilman Aldama's council item of special interest about designating property slum properties. The Arizona Revised Statute, Section 33, 1901 through 1906, gives cities and towns the authority to designate a rental property as a slum property when it has conditions that are violate health and safety hazards. There's a list of items right there that's actually in the statute, and it's about things that are unsafe for the residents and tenants of that apartment complex. There's benefits to designating a property a slum property. What the city would do is contact the owner, talk to the owner of the property about making the corrections and fix them. But if they don't, then you can designate the property a slum property, and that gets recorded with the Maricopa County. Recording it with Maricopa County clouds the title, so that way they wouldn't be able to just sell it to an unsuspecting buyer. The designation also creates a stigma for the property, and it encourages property owners to fit, make the corrections that the city has been asking them to do. In extreme conditions, the court may assign a receiver to take control of the property. And when they do that, the receiver can make the necessary repairs of the property. They can use the funds from rents to make those repairs, and they can do anything they need to do to make the property in compliance, with the exception of selling the property. The receiver can also terminate or modify existing lease agreements, and sometimes that corrects the problem by getting the tenants that don't comply with the laws out of the property. In addition to that, the city can file a lien on the property for the expenses. If we do go to Maricopa County, a court to get a receiver for a property, they can use the proceeds from that property for all the repairs, but anything in addition to that, the city would have to pay for. Whatever the city pays for, we file a lien on the property for that. And that designation also gives the city the authority to perform inspections at any time at the property owner's expense, if there is an expense. And the state statute does require that there's a process for the owner to appeal the designation. And with that, that's providing the information, we'd be happy to prepare a draft ordinance. There are other cities that have ordinances of this nature, so we have something to go by. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, staff. I appreciate you looking into this. I believe City of Phoenix has done something similar to this, and speaking with a few individuals over there, it's been very successful. This is the tool for the council, this is a tool that we've been missing to improve the lives of our citizens and those who come in from outside of our city to live here. We can now hold owners accountable and reduce the blith in our community, Glendale-wide. This stems from the issues, the longtime issues we've had with, and I'll say it, and the owners may not like it, but Glendale Manor has been a mess, and it continues to be a mess. And our staff has done an excellent job in going out and addressing it. But if an owner just hides and we don't have the tool to address it, then again, they get away with it. And this is going to help our staff address those blights and improve the lives of the people we serve. So thank you very much. And I know that City of Phoenix has been very successful with it, and I look forward to hearing from the council on how this can better, not only my district, but city-wide, everywhere. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Any, go ahead.
Yes, Mayor, I am totally in support of moving forward on this item. I think it'll be a benefit for the entire city.
Any other discussion? Go ahead.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I too am in support of doing this. Councilmember Aldama inherited Glendale Manor from me when it was part of my district. And I can remember a time where the water was shut off. And it was on the verge of having residents move out, being forced to move out because there wasn't a decent water supply. So having a tool like this for really egregious properties, I think is, is an excellent idea.
Any other discussion? No? Okay, all right, you have a consensus. Item four.
Presentation regarding code for keeping bees.
I'm sorry, was the item introduced?
Number four.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So that's a yes. Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. This is in response to Councilmember Clark's council item of special interest on the keeping of bees in residential properties. So just for clarification upfront, this would be for residentially zoned areas. It would not be for commercial or agricultural. That is a separate issue that's handled by Arizona Revised Statutes. So there are several cities that do have an ordinance that regulates the keeping of bees as a hobby. Phoenix is one of those cities, and there are some provisions here that they have. You have to have at least 6,000 square feet of vacant area. So it doesn't mean that your lot size has to be 6,000 square feet. You have to have 6,000 square feet of vacant area after the footprint of the home and other amenities that might be included in the home are accounted for. You have to have 6,000 available square feet. There's allowed one hive per 1,700 square feet. They must be kept at least five feet from the boundary of the lot. They must have an adequate water supply, and you have to have written permission from surrounding property owners that cannot be revoked for five years. So what that means is, is as a neighbor, if I agree to allow you to have bees on your property, I cannot revoke that for five years. I have to allow you to do it for the five-year period of time. And that's unique to the Phoenix ordinance. There's no other ordinance that has that provision. Every ordinance talks about the adequate water supply, which I think makes sense. Queen Creek has an ordinance, it's got to be permitted by the city, so there's a special permit that you have to apply for through the city. Again, the adequate water supply. They've increased from five feet, which is the City of Phoenix, from the boundary of the lot, to 30 feet. I'll say hi to Ryan on the air, so he knows we can hear him. Must be kept in a manner that does not present a hazard to public health or safety, and I think that's an important provision. I think if you're going to have an ordinance that regulates the keeping of bees as a hobby, that that's really the component that you need to pay attention to. And then Maricopa, the City of Maricopa has an ordinance, essentially what it says is they've got to be kept 75 feet from neighboring residences. Tempe, the final city with an ordinance, they're not permitted in single-family and multifamily districts. So my guess is that on larger lot sizes, zoned R3 perhaps, and then in certainly agricultural areas, they would allow it. Must be at least 200 feet from an existing dwelling or another property, or, I'm sorry, an existing dwelling on another property. 50 feet from the boundary of the lot and 150 feet from any street or bridle path. So what staff would recommend for this council's consideration is an ordinance that would include the following. It would require an adequate water supply, as we talked about, every ordinance talks about that, and I think it makes sense. Limit the number of hives based on available lot space. Go with the available lot space, 6,000 square feet of available area, and one hive per 1,700 square feet, which is essentially the Phoenix ordinance. Distance requirements, I think five feet, which is what Phoenix has, is too close to the boundaries of the lot. I prefer the 50-foot from the boundary of the lot. I think it provides a better protection to neighboring residences and people on those residences. And then 200 feet from any existing dwelling on a neighboring property. And they must be kept in a manner that does not present a public health or safety issue for people that live in that neighborhood. So again, I'll leave this slide up so that council has an opportunity to ask questions on these specifics, but we are seeking consensus today on whether the City of Glendale should have an ordinance on the keeping of bees in residential properties, and if so, what language should be included in that ordinance?
Okay, a couple of questions I have. One is, we don't have any ordinance, which means people can do it right now because we don't control it.
Mayor, that is correct.
Okay, so with that...
Mayor, excuse me, I'm being corrected by my code official.
Mayor, right now, to keeping of bees, you have to have agricultural zoning, A1. It's a permitted use in A1 or A2. So right now, it's not permitted in residential. However, we do have conforming uses, and I think that may have spurred the request.
Okay, so that was the first question. The second question is, I don't like the five-foot. I don't know if people remember several years ago, I was swarmed and... I don't know if people remember several years ago, I was swarmed and stung 20-something times from my neighbor not officially keeping bees. But yeah, she was keeping bees. And she'd been told about it multiple times, and I was concerned that my grandsons or my dogs would get stung. I'm the one that ended up getting it. And that literally was about 14, 15 feet from where I was at to where they were staying. So, I'm not comfortable with the five-feet at all. I think it needs to be more than that. Is my biggest concern. And then, I don't know if there's any way in the world that we can come back and in this have some way that if people find a hive, whether it's on purpose or not, that the owners are responsible and they have to take care of that, even if they don't want them. Or the neighbors see that maybe there's a hive that's not supposed to be in a wall or something. I think we need to address that also in this. Yes?
Thank you, Mayor. I brought this up because I'm going to relate a specific situation that occurred that prompted me to bring this forward. There is a person nonconforming who has about two acres. And this person planted probably in the neighborhood of 30 to 50 hives on the back property line, which is fine if there was nobody living there. But there is a residential subdivision directly behind this person's property. And their backyards are probably the regulation 20 feet. This past summer, I know of at least three people that were stung that had to go to ER for anaphylactic shock. One person had to go three times because of this person's beekeeping activities. And I think it is, in a dense area, it is an issue of public health and safety. So, I would hope that council would be comfortable with the suggestions that have been proposed by Mr. St. John and move forward with this item of interest. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm a little curious why we didn't include that we need to, either notification or Phoenix requires permission from surrounding property owners, just because I would think that if you have people who are allergic to bee stings and things like that, that I would want to know if my neighbor was keeping bees in their backyard. So, I don't, it complicates things. I don't know whether, then, if you have the written permission, then you need to have a permit. I don't care if the permit is $5. I mean, just that we make sure that they are dotting their i's and crossing their t's and that the neighbors are aware that somebody's going to be keeping bees next door or behind them or whatever. And that way, they know if they want to, if there's a way for them to object, saying, "I have a child who's allergic to bees, and now I can't let them play in the backyard." So, I mean, I'm all for property rights. I mean, I really do believe in property rights. But it's a right that doesn't exist right now, literally, except unless you're zoned agriculture. So, if somebody's in a regular, just, you know, residential cookie-cutter neighborhood and has, you know, can meet the other criteria of spacing, that I feel like they should either have permission or at least notification. I would prefer permission. I don't know whether, how everybody else feels about it, of the neighbors, because, I mean, people could die from a bee sting. So, not letting the neighbors know that we're allowing this, I think is, I feel like that could be problematic. Thank you.
Anybody else? Yeah, well, I'll go back to you in just a second. If we go with the proposed, that really limits, I mean, really, truly limits a lot of people that could do this, which I think is pretty much what the idea is. You know, the 50 feet from a boundary, that probably would have kept me from being stung. The 200 feet from any existing dwelling absolutely would have prevented that from ever happening, no doubt. And I noticed that our attorney cringed when I said if people have hives on a property, even if they, if they're not theirs. I still think we need to figure out a way to deal with that.
Mayor and council, I wasn't cringing. The example that you were giving is actually already a nuisance under our code, and we would enforce that. So, if somebody, for whatever reason unbeknownst to them, and they were identified as harboring, let's say, a bee's nest in their shed, then we could cite them for a nuisance. But this is directed at actual people who are keeping bees to produce honey. So, just a little different nuance.
Okay, well, if there's a way that we can do something about it, that's, before I was led to believe that we had no say-so over that. So, that's fine.
We do.
That's fine. Okay, yes, you and then your neighbor.
I don't know if I would go as far as to require permission of abutting or adjoining neighbors, but I think that there should be a notification provision, that we at least let them know that there is a person keeping bees at such and such a property. Then if it becomes an issue, they know where to go and who to contact.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a very interesting, and I'm glad it came up, because bees are very beneficial. We know that. Changes the way we live without them. But, again, they can be very dangerous. With regard to the notification, I support that. Question is, there are homes that, their backyards butt up against a schoolyard or a park? How would we address that if they meant everything, but yet their backyard was adjacent to a park or to a school? The notification would definitely help, but how would we address that?
Mayor, Councilmember Aldama, I think the question would have to come up in terms of the public health and safety. And we'd have to make an assessment on whether allowing a property adjacent to a school, for example, that might have several children playing in the playground, varying different allergies and dangers, whether we would allow the beekeeping as a hobby on that property because of the proximity to the school? I think that would be the provision that we would go to.
Thank you. If we can do something like that, I would be definitely supportive of an ordinance that manages and controls it. Question, though, obviously, everybody needs to have water, but every ordinance has written in it they need to have sufficient water. What does that mean? How much water do you need for a box or 10 boxes? Is it an open container? Is it flowing water? Can you explain? I know nothing about beekeeping.
Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Aldama, I don't either. So, just in reading the ordinance, it was a provision that everybody had in there. And so, I figured at some point, and on the commercial side of keeping of bees and producing what bees produce, that must be an issue. It must be a consideration. And so, we'd have to do a little more research into how we would determine whether they had an adequate water supply. But what does that mean? So, if you have three hives, you have to have X flow of gallons per minute? Or is it something different? I wouldn't even begin to know.
And thinking, the reason why I'm asking is because if that, whatever that means, if it means that the water's going to stay stagnant, now we may have an issue with mosquitoes. So, I don't know anything about it. I just thought I'd ask if you'd look into it. But the schools and the parks was a concern. Thank you.
I think what it really, what it really comes down to is if you don't have water, they will find water. They're not, they're going to go into the neighbor's yard. And that's the problem. If they make that into a freeway...
If they have a pool and you don't, they're not even going to stay in your property.
Well, correct. So, I think that's really the main reason, just to make sure that they stay in or close to that property.
Thank you, Mayor. So, how do we, without having somebody come in and get a permit, and like I said, for a very nominal fee, just so we know as a city that somebody has bees? And then they, and then once they get the permit, they can be given these. Otherwise, they're just going to be like, "Well, I'm getting bees. I mean, I heard Glendale's allowing bees now, so I'm getting bees," and not even know what our ordinance says. So, I don't know whether we want to consider literally like a $5 permit or something, saying, because otherwise, how are they going to know what's required? I'm not sure how we get that information, unless we say, "You can have bees. You got to come in and get a permit. And here are our rules for if you want to have bees."
Mayor, Councilmember Tavolchaf, that makes sense.
But before I go to Councilmember Clark, did anybody check egg laws in the state of Arizona as far as what we can and can't do? So, I mean, I know that...
Yes, I did.
Okay, so, you want to talk about that?
Yeah, there's nothing there. I did, I did.
Well, them legislators are sleeping, then, because they got laws on...
Yeah, I did search Arizona Revised Statutes for bees and beekeeping, and I couldn't find anything.
Mayor, the only regulations that I found were dealt with commercial, keeping of bees for commercial purposes.
Yeah, I think, I think all of us probably agree the fact that there's got to be a way that the city knows who's doing it. And the neighbors should certainly know that they're doing it. And then there should be a contact person in case something happens, you know, where we have a way to get ahold of them. Everybody sort of agree on that?
Yeah, yeah, Mayor, I do agree with just some, I mean, there are some people who will be oblivious and never know they need a permit. But the majority of people will figure it out and come in and get. And if it's five bucks, that's fine. We don't want to be prohibitive. We want to encourage people to come forward. But I wanted to speak to your adequate water supply, with which I have personal knowledge. There is someone who is keeping bees in my neighborhood. I don't know where. I don't know how far bees can travel daily.
Depends whether they have a passport or not.
Yeah, I have a koi pond. I kid you not that on any given summer day, there are at least 100 bees traveling to and from wherever they're living, getting water from my koi pond. Someone in my area is keeping bees and does not have an adequate water supply. I can't use, I can't do any work around pond. I do very little during the summertime because I'm afraid that I'm going to get stung. So, I wonder, I wonder if people with pools ever have bees visiting their pools. So, I think adequate water supply is critical.
Yeah, well, I do know that dirt daubers and wasps frequent swim in pools and things like that, but they're definitely not honeybees. All right, any other questions?
Mayor.
Who's asking?
This is Councilmember Turner. I think, I don't know that we came to any kind of agreement on the notification or permission from the neighbor situation. And given that the boundaries here are 50 foot from the boundary of the lot, so that means the lot would, at a minimum, have to be 104 feet wide to be able to put the box down the middle, I guess. But, and that would rule out a lot of our neighborhoods, but, you know, 100-foot-wide lots are still around. And you're not going to have many neighbors in those-sized neighborhoods. So, I don't think it would be too big a burden to expect to have the permission of your neighbor, maybe up if the overall lot size is below a certain level. You know, if you've got a five-acre lot, I don't know that you necessarily need to, you know. But I'm concerned with the health aspect of people being unaware that there may be a risk right over the fence or the wall that they're not, they wouldn't normally expect. Thank you.
And that sort of makes me also think of the problem with asking for someone's permission. If maybe your dog was barking the night before and kept him up all night long, you may never get that permission. I don't know, although I like the idea of going to all the neighbors and asking for permission. But I certainly believe that they should all be notified what's going on, as long as all these other provisions are happening. And 50 feet from a fence, I don't see a concern myself.
Mayor, what about if we decide, and I think there was, seemed like there was a consensus to require a permanent permit for a nominal fee. So, what if we, based on the permits, create a database, and then people can look for themselves to see if somebody in their neighborhood is keeping bees? That might be a way to, you know...
I like, I still like the notification.
All right.
Thank you, Mayor.
I do like the notification. I just don't think that neighbors should have to get permission.
Yeah, I agree. I think the notification is sufficient.
And I don't know who to ask this question to, but what is, what is the cheapest permit that we have on anything in the state, in the City of Glendale? Anybody have a clue?
Mayor, members of the council, I would guess free.
Okay, the one more expensive than free? I mean, $5 doesn't seem like it's worthwhile for, I can't think of anything the city does for $5.
Mayor and council, I believe, I believe it's $50 is what typically, like our fees are generally around that area, $50.
Yeah, I would be more inclined to think 25 or something, but $5 doesn't even seem worth, I mean, that's why we quit, Gus the bus, we quit charging the 25 cents. It costs more to count the quarters. I think it should be a minimum $25, personally. All right, any other conversation? What else do you need from us?
So, Mayor, members of the council, if I can clarify the language that I have on the slideshow right now, is the language we'll include, along with a permitting and notification requirement. And we'll set the permitting fee at $25. Is there consensus for that?
Okay, and how long is a permit good for?
As long as they keep the bees.
Okay, one time deal?
Mayor, members of the council, that's what I understood, but I was waiting to hear the conversation.
Mayor.
Totally good with that.
I just, I need one clarification before you verbally added, in regards to the 200 feet from an existing dwelling, you verbally added "on a neighboring property." So, you will, and that's how I would accept it? So, you would add that into the final draft?
Mayor, Councilmember Turner, yes.
Not from their own house, but from a neighbor's house.
A neighboring dwelling, correct.
Right, thank you.
Mayor?
Yes?
Will this be part of the criminal or the nuisance code so that we can actually use it?
Mayor, Councilmember Clark, it'll be part of Chapter 25, yes.
Thank you.
All right, you good?
Yes, sir.
Okay, everybody good? Next.
Request for City Council to amend Glendale City Code, Chapter 26, regarding criminal littering.
Mayor, members of the council, again, here to provide the staff report will be Deputy City Manager Rick St. John.
Mayor, members of the council, this is a recommendation from the Code Review Committee. Currently, criminal littering is managed in Arizona Revised Statute. This is a request, and it is criminal, I should add that. So, currently, any littering of any size, and that's how Arizona Revised Statute is designated, so less than 100 pounds, more than 100 pounds, different classes of misdemeanor. If we add it to our city code, we can make violations of criminal littering. It would actually a violation of civil littering, if you will. So, it'd be a civil offense for first offense, second offense, and then a third or subsequent offense in a 12-month period could be criminal. Although, that's how we've done it in the past with some other codes that we've amended. This, however, would make it a civil offense. Any person who commits criminal littering of less than 100 pounds would be considered a civil offense for a first offense. Any subsequent offenses in a 12-month period would be treated as a Class II misdemeanor. Anything over 100 pounds would be handled by the Arizona Revised Statute. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
I support it.
Thank you.
Don't see any other questions. Yeah. All right, item six.
Statutory publication requirements. Okay. There are statutory requirements that the city publish its legal notices in a paper that is printed and published, either in the city or in the county. The city has become aware that the Glendale Star, the city's current official newspaper, is printed in Yavapai County and does not meet the statutory requirement. The city needs to find a new official newspaper. And there are other weekly papers printed and published in Maricopa County that will meet the statutory requirement. However, there will be an increase in publication costs. Staff would like council direction regarding the criteria for selecting a paper. Should the main consideration be circulation to Glendale households? And if so, staff would recommend the weekly insert in the Arizona Republic. Based on its circulation, it would reach the most households in the city. Staff would also like direction on whether council wants to continue the practice of publishing all adopted resolutions. To offset the increased publication costs with a new newspaper, the city could stop publishing all of its resolutions. There is no legal requirement to do so. And our survey of some of the valley's largest cities, including Mesa, Chandler, Scottsdale, Peoria, and Surprise, found that none of... cities, including Mesa, Chandler, Scottsdale, Peoria, and Surprise, found that none of these cities publish all of their resolutions. The city spends over $3,000 each year publishing resolutions, and that cost will increase with the selection of a new official newspaper. Also, the resolutions are available online for the public on our Clerk's webpage, and so staff recommends publishing only resolutions that have a legal requirement to do so. So again, staff is seeking council direction on the selection factors for the new official newspaper and the continued publication of all resolutions. That concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you. So I guess before I get cranking on this, I, again, gonna bring up something else that I have pushed for, not very hard the last few years, and this can be from Mr. Lee, that we take a position that we quit spending money on this and try to get it to where we can just go electronic only. The problem is, is there's been too many people, too weak to challenge the newspapers on this. I think we need to take a position, push it to the Lega Cities to try to get their, their endorsement, because this is happening everywhere, and it doesn't make any sense when everybody's going electronic and yet we're still spending money on paper. It just doesn't make sense to me. So that's, that's something I would really like to do, but I would encourage the Capital Times myself because of the cost. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just say that, I mean, I understand from the, from the journalism and the newspaper industry perspective that it's a, this is a source of revenue, and that if everybody went online, I would imagine they would charge for that as well. So I don't know if we'd be accomplishing anything because they, they'd have to replace the revenue stream somewhere. So I agree, the Capital Times is fine, and the resolutions, I mean, I didn't even know we were, I didn't really realize we were still doing that, and now with the ability of people to, you know, find the meetings on Facebook and, you know, I mean, and they can find, I mean, you can go to the meeting that the resolution was adopted at and find, you know, maybe we should make a video on showing people how to find things on, you know, on, like, how would you look, and start doing tutorials and even more encourage residents to, you can find just about anything on the city website, but I don't see any, I honestly don't see any reason to continue publishing resolutions. We adopt them in public, they're posted in public meetings, and I wouldn't object to somebody making a video showing people how, here's how you find, you know, a resolution, here's how you find minutes from a voting meeting, here's how you can watch a video from a voting meeting, and little tutorials, people love videos anyway, so it would, I think, up our online content of videos of things, which is a good thing anyway. So that's kind of where I'm at. I think we stop with the resolutions and go with the Capital Times.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I think we should stop with the resolutions, too, and go with the Capital Times, but I think the videos, tutorials are a smashing idea, and, and we should be using them all the time for all kinds of things, because you're right, a lot of people, not a lot of people, but some people still have trouble navigating the city site. I also like the mayor's idea of creating something before the league and getting the league to support it. And, and you're right, we have been reluctant to stop publication in print, but I think there was a good reason at the time. For a long time, the Glendale Star was where we published, and it was locally owned, and so we supported our local homegrown paper, but it is no longer locally owned, it's owned by a major company at this point, and so the compunction to support a local business is no longer there, and I, I would very much like to see all city notices and all government notices go digital. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other comments? Go ahead.
I would agree with the sentiments that have been expressed. The question I had is, is why isn't the Glendale Star not listed on our list? I didn't.
On a Glendale publication.
They're not published in. Mayor and council.
They're at Peoria.
They are no longer legally compliant as a newspaper.
That's why we're here.
Okay, I didn't catch that, thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. A few things, the, the purpose of these public notices is to give advance notice to what's being considered by the council, and some of our resolutions do provide advance notice for a general plan amendment or things like that. They're not, they're distinctly different than our proclamations for, you know, National Beekeepers Week or something like that, but, you know, those I don't think we would need to, to publish, but I'm, I'm concerned about not publishing all of our resolutions, so I don't know if a resolution regarding a zoning or a general plan amendment has the effect of an ordinance and would have to be published, or whatever.
Mayor.
Yeah?
Mayor and council, Councilmember Turner, to Ms. Bowers' point, we, there are some resolutions that have to be, and they're generally, a resolution is post-action of the council. It's notice that, notice of something we've done. It's not notice that we're going to be doing something, so it's post-action. So to your point where it's provide notice, no, it's literally, the only purpose that it serves is post-action of the council. We're now posting it for the public to see, this is the action that we have taken. And so for the most part, and I'll give you just some plain examples, we can go into greater detail if necessary, later I can get it to you separately, but there are some land use actions that require statutorily a resolution. However, as a practice for the city, we will enter into contracts and utilize a resolution, and we'll still publish that resolution. We don't need to do that, but for the stuff that's mandated statutorily, we will still do it. There's not a lot of those. There's a lot more that are non-statutory, but as a matter of practice, we've done it historically. So there will be a fair amount of cost savings if we just go to those that are mandated statutorily, but also then to the point of it's usually post-action, not pre-action. When you're talking about pre-action, that's a different question with regards to land use notices and that sort of thing.
So, Mayor, if I could, for clarification, we do have things that we advertise in advance of the action, is that not right? So that, that's, those are legal advertisements that we would be talking about?
Mayor and council, yeah, that's separate from resolution. That would be a legal advertisement for, let's say, a re.
For a public hearing.
Yeah, for a public hearing. So those we notice in advance. So for example, a land use action that has a requirement of a public hearing, yes, we do that, we're required to do that in advance.
Okay, so again, to my point that a lot of, maybe even most of what we're posting is to notice the public ahead of time, so they will beware, be aware and can share their concerns with the council. Given that the cost that we've been spending on this, and if we reduce the not necessary resolutions, it's still only going to be $3,000 to $4,000 a year, I think that publishing them somewhere hard copy is useful, at least for another generation, you know, because not everybody is online, and I think we still have a lot of people who are that hard copy newspaper-type reader. It seems to me that the, it seems to me that the staff recommendation was to utilize the Arizona Republic. Did I miss the conversation that we began talking about the Capital Times? I would prefer that we stay with the Arizona Republic because they do have a Glendale section that comes out three times a week. It would give us more flexibility perhaps in meeting deadlines and things like that, but also because it arrives local, it's available in free newsstands as well, it doesn't have to be by subscription, you can pick it up, you know, in many newsstands around the city, and also for those who might want to have it electronically, an electronic subscription to the Arizona Republic is $10 a month, whereas a subscription to the Capital Times or, I thought the only others mentioned is significantly more expensive. So I would like to see us stay with the Arizona, or move to the Arizona Republic.
Go ahead.
I, I believe that the electronic is the way we need to move to. However, I do agree with Councilmember Turner regarding the Arizona Republic, but I disagree with publishing all. I think if we, if we reduce the publishing down to the required and we go with the Republic, the cost would probably be very similar to what we're doing now, or maybe a little bit more, but it would, I think, for those who do require a written, and again, my, my point is, I believe everyone's getting away from the written newspaper, as far as it's, it's electronic, it's extremely available. I don't know if down the road, you know, we do agree with the mayor, we should petition the Lega Cities and Towns to kind of take this issue up, because I believe there are a lot of other ways, you know, it's kind of like when there's a, a variance that's being considered for a neighborhood, you can get put on a list, and that list, you, you get that mailed out to you, but we could do it electronically. We could, if there's people that want to know every resolution, you know, I, I don't think it'd be difficult for us to set up a system that just sends it out automatically to everybody that really wants it. And that way, those who want it get it, and if they don't want it, then, you know, there's no, no need to sign up. So I think there's a lot of different ways to do it, but in the meantime, until we get to that point, I would agree that a more wider distribution, even though I like the idea that Arizona Capital Times, I mean, you look at the quantity of 3,200 people or deliveries, I don't know if that, is that within Glendale? I assume that's, that's just total.
That's their total circulation.
Okay, and so it just, it just doesn't make sense to go with something, even though it saves us a little money, that really nobody's going to see. Thank you.
Nobody reads any of them anyway, that's the problem. Mr. Bailey. I don't know if you've read Arizona statutes on this item or not, but would we be, would we be breaking the law if we posted with the Republic for all notices go on Glendale's website? I mean, is there a way that you could put in a very, you can't do that?
I'll need to take a look, but my recollection is no, you actually need to publish the notice, because keep in mind, there's two, generally, there's two requirements. One is that we posted at City Hall, and so then we also were required to post it online, and then that, that same posting is what we have to then have published in the newspaper. We can't just put a byline in there saying, "Go see www.glandaleaz.com." That we cannot do. It actually has to be a publishing of the item. So and that's the problem, is that the size, in terms of especially land use items, the size of what is being published is fairly large, and it usually doesn't fall within their columns, so you're, you're, you're taking more than just a column or two columns. It's, sometimes you're taking a half-page of a newspaper.
Yeah, well, and the reason I asked that is, is watch any, any TV commercial that a doctor or dentist or a prescription or a cigarette or any of those, and you'll see the disclaimers that "I dare anybody to read without hitting pause." It's impossible. And if you try to listen to a radio announcement on the disclaimers, unless you're a speed hearer, you'll never understand what it says. I don't, I don't know how our laws can get so twisted, but I guess it's because they got good attorneys on both sides to fight it. Again, I, I think our answer is right now, you know, bite the bullet, pay the money, even though we don't want to, but work as hard as we can to get other cities to go along with us, to make it legal for people to go just on our website to get that information. If you're wanting information on Glendale, where else would you go? Why would you go to a newspaper when you go to its own website? It just makes sense, and it's hard for anybody to argue why we wouldn't do that, other than newspapers that make their revenues from that. Any other comment? Okay, so I guess what we have to decide is what newspaper, I've heard a couple that said Capital Times, I've heard a couple that said Republic, so I'm not sure where we're at on that. Go ahead.
I think the Arizona Republic, I mean, and I didn't realize that, I read this over the weekend and forgot that the staff recommended Arizona Republic, and, I mean, the circulation numbers are, you know, I mean, if we're gonna, if we're gonna provide notice, we should go with the larger circulation number, so, and they do have, as Councilmember Turner said, the Glendale section where people would look for that information, too, so I'm, I'm ready to change my mind from the Capital Times to the Arizona Republic.
Mayor. I, too. I am going to support the Republic rather than the Capital Times for the very reasons that have been stated. To this day, we're still getting the print newspaper. I, I don't want it, but we get it every day, so yeah, Arizona Republic.
Okay, so you have a consensus on Arizona Republic? Anything else?
The resolutions, was there consensus to stop publishing?
I don't, I don't know as though there was a consensus to keep the resolutions, was there?
Stop.
Okay, so.
Just the required, legally required resolutions.
Other than what you have to legally do.
Correct.
Correct, yeah. Okay. Good?
Good, thank you.
Okay, City Manager's report.
Mayor, members of council, I've got three quick items for you. The first, just wanted to give an update on a council priority project on the Capitol side, and that's regarding the, the Grand Ramadas at the Swallow Ranch Park, and so that restoration is coming along well, it's on schedule, and it's staying on budget. Currently, electrical plumbing, structural repairs, and painting are nearing completion. Pigeon netting, picnic tabletops, and benches are being installed as we speak, and the Ramadas are slated to be 100% back in service this fall, and so we'll let you know for sure when it's done, but that project is coming along nicely, and again, this is, was a project that the council had prioritized. Mentioned earlier in our workshop about all the activity happening in the Loop 303 area. U.S. Capital Development, which is a huge company out of the Midwest, is doing their first Arizona project here in Glendale, and so they are nearing completion of a 600,000 square-foot facility. It's the first of several buildings they'll be building, and this is down on the Loop 303 area, just a little bit off of Camelback Road and 152nd Avenue. So that continues to go really well. We've received great feedback from their project team complimenting Glendale and how hard our team has worked to help get this project moving forward. And the final thing, if you'll take a look at your monitor, we'll be sending you out a link here this afternoon, but we now have a live camera shot of the Crystal Lagoon project, so what you're seeing here right now is a live shot. You can zoom in, so you can move the camera around a little bit, you can start to see you've got vertical columns and platforms elevating. That's, work on the right there is the, is the east tower for the hotel, and so this is moving along fine. Eventually, they're going to be taking and capturing shots each week, and then when you see the play button up on the top right-hand corner, they'll actually be able to do a time lapse and show the project coming together, so we're real excited about that. We'll get that link out to you here this afternoon, so you can share that with your citizens, also just for your own personal curiosity, and with that, that completes my report.
And that's, that's gonna be just a, a one photo per week?
I'm not sure how the time lapse will work 100%, but it's designed to kind of be able to show you a project building out. I can get that information for you.
I would hope they do it every day.
Yeah.
I think it'd make it, huh? Yeah, I think every day would be awesome, but, no, that's great, that's awesome. I don't know who thought of that, but kudos. All right. City Attorney's report.
No report, thank you.
Okay, Council item special interest. Everybody knows how this works, Mr. Aldama.
Not at this time, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Clark.
Yes, Mayor, I do have one. I've had my council assistant researching this issue for several months, and I am proposing, and I have provided you with some material for your review. I am proposing that the city investigate the creation of a special overlay district that would be used to protect marginalized and disadvantaged neighborhoods throughout the city. This is something near and dear to my heart in terms of how do we protect existing neighborhoods, and this might be part of the solution. So I offer that in that spirit today.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Melner.
Nothing today, Mayor.
Councilmember Tomchow.
Yes, Mayor, I do have one. I'd like to, I guess, essentially resurrect the residential trash and recycling survey results. That was an item of interest of Councilmember Melner's, and I, I knew we got a memo, so I went back and found it, and the memo was from December 30th of 2020, and it said, basically gave us an overview of the results of the, the survey that was done, and that they would be brought back to a workshop for council consideration for policy on recycling fees. And I, I know I've seen in the upcoming agenda that we are going to be talking about solid waste rates, so I don't know whether that's planned to be part of that discussion, but I'm asking that that be part of that discussion. I'm asking that that be part of that discussion or brought back in tandem with the discussion about a policy moving forward, recycling, whether we're going to establish a fee, what we're going to do about recycling. Thank you.
Councilmember Turner?
Nothing today, Mayor.
Vice Mayor?
Nothing, Mayor.
Okay, and other than the two items that I've already brought up during this meeting, I have nothing else. Can I get a motion to go into executive session?
So, Mayor?
Hold on.
Mayor, right here. Point of order, sir.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I want to bring up really quick the item of interest by Councilmember Clark. I spoke with Ms. Clark when she dropped this, this document on the dais. I asked her the question if it encompassed my district, and she replied, yes, it does. This, I asked her if she would meet with me, she replied, no, it violates and crosses the council guidelines. I'm asking Councilmember Clark if she'll meet with me, so that she can share with me her ideas in my district, because this, her item of interest is specifically in the Ocatillo District, and I'd, I'd like to ask Councilmember Clark, again, to meet with me as this crosses the line on Councilmember ethics, and it's written in policy. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, I would like to respond.
Go ahead.
When you asked me originally if it applied to your district, yes, but it doesn't apply just to your district. It applies to any marginalized neighborhoods within the city of Glendale, and I should have clarified that when you asked me the question. I don't believe it's relegated just to your district, and I don't feel the need to meet with you regarding an issue that I consider to be citywide.
All right. Can I get a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Aldama, second, Councilmember Tomchop, to go into executive session and a discussion on a motion. Hearing none. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Any votes voting aye, pairs of ayes. Have it, do you have it? Yes?
We're staying here.
We're staying right here. Yeah, we're gonna have everybody else.
We're going right back there.
What? No.
No, we're staying out.
We have let's.
Yeah, okay, so to clarify, it was brought to my attention that the room, being the size, there was some concern without a filtration system, that it might be too small, so I thought if we just have it right here and ask the non-essential people to leave, we can accomplish the same thing. Just carry the food out. Do everybody go back, get your food, and bring it back out here? Until we figure out the filtration system.
Okay, so we go get our food.
Go get your food and come back out here. Go use the restroom, whatever you need to do.
Do we have to use the restroom?